Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Start with the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitap.
Here.
Chairperson Bohm.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. We've got four things to add to the agenda. We're going to do the closed session first and then the resolutions, two resolutions. We'll just end them on to the other three to the end of the agenda as A, J, K, L, M, N, O. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Home favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Approval of agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Home favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's close session. Let's go into...
This time I'd like to move going closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, negotiating strategy.
Second. Home favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And I started 12.
Maybe nobody did.
Hello, sir.
How are you?
Pretty good, how are you?
Yeah, I pulled this off from the internet. There it is halfway down the page. Page one.
I thought it was the last one.
Both are good.
Yeah.
I know, it's a shoot. I have a dream that I could shoot her a picture around the block.
She does look good, so she's a lovely woman.
Yeah.
I think that's nice.
Just a, just a...
Because usually at home, you can't get this much.
In that case, you probably not.
I didn't say.
Because they have...
I think they have...
I think they have...
I don't know.
So I think they have, that was just...
Before that, you don't put that in.
You mean those are...
Let's do it like...
So I think...
Yeah.
I don't know.
You have to dress your way in.
You're here.
I don't know, you know.
It's just right.
I'm supposed to, to dance.
It's a contest, but it's on the property.
For the circus.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I see these people.
It's a lot of people.
Take it to better pieces.
Might as well.
Item 6A, meetings previous meeting. Do I have a motion? Anyone? Any one?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve and file the minutes of the 11/21/2019 Commission Meeting.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, no proclamations. Consent agenda, items A through...
Eight N.
N.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve items 8A through 8N on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any of them. Home favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Items nine reports, standing special committees, Mr. Greitap.
I just want to bring everybody up to speed on the collapse of the dock at the Harson's Island ferry. They've been working diligently to get it in place. They are moving people back and forth as passengers on a small vessel, six at a time, as needed, no cost to those residents on the island, and they are anticipating sometime tomorrow, maybe a little bit later in the day, that they will have the ferry up and running again for everybody to use, so that's good news for those residents.
That is.
That's it.
Okay. David?
Saying I'm no longer track supervisor in Detroit, they do have derailment today.
Uh-oh. That's it.
Nothing to think. How do you copy that?
Greg.
Someday. We had emergency management meeting this morning, and they're getting ready to get, apply for the 2020 grants, and there was some notices sent out to different agencies who normally would apply, right, police departments, fire departments, different things. They haven't got a lot of response yet, so if you have any agencies in your districts that you think might be interested, it's the 2020 grant application, but they probably won't realize this money until 2023 to 2024 typically. So it's, you know, if you're looking for something down the road and you know you need something, and it's just, it can't hurt to throw some, you know, throw enough at the wall. The grant money is, there's, was 800 and some thousand, 700,000, I think this year, 300, 280-ish?
It's been dwindling each year.
It's been dwindling, but still, it's money that comes from the state and from the federal that sticks in our area. And we did have a gentleman from CN, the representative that was, that sits on the Emergency Management Board, and when Justin was talking to everybody about the ferry being closed and not knowing exactly, and they, you know, called the different agencies in to have, to look at things, he offered their services, and he said, you know, I know we deal with trains and they're more of a solid surface than waters on, or ferries on the river, but he said, we have a pretty astonishing engineering department that if you need some quick help, I know we could have somebody there today to help you look at your problem and help that. Just, it was, it was pretty refreshing to know that, that people are out there and those things are available, so it was nice.
That was in response to the good service that he got from the community when they had their derailment?
When they had their train derailment, he said they thought they were treated especially well, and they were pleased with everything, and they would love to reciprocate, so it was nice.
Georgia. Howard?
Park and Rec, I think we're going to have some progress on asset management for our parks, some reports coming out, and I think once we get all of those in place, it'll just be a matter of keeping up on them and updating them. But the first, the hard part's going to be getting those initial reports, but they're coming.
Okay. I'm going to take a pass, no unfinished business, I'm sorry, citizens wishing to address the board, any citizens. Unfinished business, none, items 12A, Resolution 1924.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to adopt Resolution 19-24, adopting the 2020 Special Revenue Funds Budgets and amending the 2019 General and Special Revenue Funds Budgets.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item B, Resolution 1927.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 1927, the annual reversion of available fund balance from other funds to the general fund and subsequent distributions.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item C, Resolution 1920.
This time I move to adopt Resol- Resolution 19-20, establishing compensation to members of the St. Clair County Road Commission. Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, Resolution 1921.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-21, establishing the salaries of specific county elected and unelected officers for 2020.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to take items F, G, H, I, K, L, M, N, O, and...
How about E?
Oh, we didn't do that yet.
No.
All right, my fault. Let's go back to E, jumping ahead. Resolution 1922.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt Resolution 1931, ratifying the collective bargaining. Oh, I'm sorry.
We skipped ahead.
I'm on F.
I think this one's mine, Howard.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I would move to, move to the adoption of Resolution 1922, approving annual wage adjustments for the county association of non-union employees. Can you?
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, going back, so items F, G, H, I, K, L, M, N, O, and then it's AM and AN. These are all the resolutions ratifying the collective bargaining agreement, so we're going to do that in one.
Also move? Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So then that'll drop us down to Resolution 1935, item J. Who's got it, somebody?
1935.
Yeah, we have 12J.
Somebody give me a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, so we're going to jump down now to item P, Policy 343. Who's got P?
This is tough.
I do, I'm sorry.
Ryan Howard.
I move that we approve the revision of Policy 343, the retirement policy.
Support.
Discussion.
I think we need to all just a little slower, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
How did it get outlined?
2002 Memorandum of an Agreement with MSU Extension.
This time I'd move to approve the 2020 Memorandum of Agreement for MSU Extension Services in St. Clair County in the amount of $27,737. Support.
Discussion, I'll have to go with the roll call on that, you know.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item R, the 2022 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the 2020 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item S, 2020 Pension Retiree Healthcare Contribution Rates.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the pension contribution amount of $3,743,410, with any budgeted dollars remaining to be contributed to the Retire Health Care Trust Fund.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item T, the agreement with Hartford.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to award the agreement for life and long-term disability, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, and employee assistance program service to Hartford in the amount of $408,300 for a term of 1/1 of '20 through 12/31/22, and authorize the administrator slash controller to execute the same, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item U, the Air Industrial Park Lease.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Air Industrial Park ground lease for Lot 24, assignment and consent of owner from Triple J Enterprises to D and R Development Properties LLC.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item V, the Bell River Wet Ban.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the Donor Designated Fund Endowment Agreement with Community Foundation of St. Clair County for the Bell River Wetland Mitigation Bank in the amount of $40,000.
Support.
Discussion.
I'd just a comment, I think that's really a good, good idea and a good approach to it.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item W.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the Board and Commission's reappointments as presented, with the exception of Parks and Recreation Commission District Four and Five. It's come to my attention that there are a couple of people out there who would like to apply for that position, and we're not aware of the fact that we moved our meeting one week sooner because of the holidays, and I would like to give those people an opportunity to get their applications in.
Support.
Who supported?
I don't know.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Childcare Fund Budget Amendment Approval.
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2019 childcare fund budget adjustment.
Support. What? Got lots of support.
We're all very supportive.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Y, the City of Port Huron Easement.
This time I'd move to approve the easement agreements with the City of Port Huron and DTE Electric Company for the addition of expanded electrical services to the wastewater treatment plant.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Z, Contract Approval Request.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the agreement with Journal Technology Incorporated for the development of implicent, oh, I can't even talk tonight, of the web-based E-court and E-probation court management system in the amount of $1,150,000.
Support.
Discussion. This will be...
I'd just like to say that this has been a long process, it's been going on for a long time, most of us have followed it pretty closely. I believe in all honesty that due diligence has been given. There was a trip out to, out west to, with a group of people that looked at it, they liked it, everything is good. There's some good things about this, I don't want to get down in the weeds on this, but there's some good things about this particular contract and this company that are very, very favorable, and I'm rather excited that we've got the money finally to at least get this thing started and get it rolling.
When do we think it'll implement?
Full implementation is probably 18 months if everything goes smoothly, but once this contract is signed, the process will get started quickly.
Okay.
Anything else on this? Roll, yeah, roll call.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AA, the Contract Approval Request.
I would move to approve the lease agreement with KC Real Estate Investment LLC for the temporary use of the medical examiner's office in the amount of $2,000 per month.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AB, the Contract Approval Request.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the agreement with Neo Government for a web-based talent management system for the term of January 1st, 2000 through December 31st, 2022, in the amount of $91,680.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AC, the Contract Approval Request.
This time I'd move to approve the agreement with St. Clair County RISA for payroll services for a term of 01, 01/20 through 12/31/20 in the amount of $30,000. Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AD, the Mental Health Court Grant.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Agreement in the amount of $315,861.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AE, the subcontract with Blue Water DRP.
I'd move to approve the fiscal year 2020 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract with Blue Water DRP LLC for drug and alcohol testing in the amount not to exceed $10,500.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AF, Agreement with Community Mental Health.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the fiscal year 2020 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Letter of Agreement subcontract with St. Clair County Community Mental Health in the amount not to exceed $48,539.68.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AG, 2002, the Letter of Agreement with Region 10.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 Letter of Agreement with Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan for Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Prevention Services for Intervention Center Inmates in the amount of $104,750.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AH, Landfill Operations Agreement Extension and Amendment with Talaski.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the seventh contract extension and amendment with Tansky Excavating LLC for landfill operations for a term of January 1st, 2000 through December 31st, 2024, in the amount of $10,315,549.
Second. Any discussion, I got Matt here, Talaski's been out there as long as I've been on the board, done a good job for us, had never had violations, so on and so forth, they know the bioreactor, Howard?
I was just going to say, that note that Jim Lockston included, we just upped his service agreement again, and he has been invaluable in giving us advice in terms of the operation of the landfill and dealing with contracts such as this, and I agree with everything you just said.
Anything else, roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap.
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm.
Yes. Item AI, the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
This time I'd move to approve the Metropolitan Planning Commission Bylaws Revisions as presented. Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item AJ, Public Guarding Manning Table.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Manning Table Request to modify the Senior Housing Case Manager from part-time to full-time.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item AK, the Septic Tank Appeals Board Appointment.
Move to appoint Mary Agnes Simons Township Supervisor to the Septic Tank Appeals Board for the remainder of a four-year term, expiring 12/31/20.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Items AL, we have a ballot here, there's two choices for the Veteran Affairs. Sorry? Uh, just two copies.
Two copies.
Yeah, just two copies, just pa, pass them on, yeah. And you pick one, and we will tally up the votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
I've got your ballot.
I got Howard's. I got, I got the name, that's all right. The rookie maneuver. They do, they do that in other countries. You can't change your vote once you make it, Jeff.
I have my own, great guess, yep.
I voted, I voted and turned it in.
Look at you.
Thank you. You sure? Way to go, guys.
Trying to make it too easy on us with our names on them.
Just announce who the cop voter was.
While we're counting up those ballots, I just want to comment that, uh, it was, uh, very refreshing to see, uh, how many people applied for this position in the past and future, uh, I mean, now, and, uh, it, it was just kind of refreshing to see that happen. Currently on the board, there are...
Oh, they expanded.
Four, they went to five, so...
No, there were three.
There was three, not five. Five, good.
You have the, uh...
Wendy Martindale.
Okay, so Wendy's the appointee.
Mister Chairman, at this time, then, I move to appoint Wendy Martindale to the Veterans Affairs Board for a four-year term, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item thirteen, administrators' report.
What we got?
We have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, AO.
M?
Nope, we did M, and we did N, AO would be the, uh, AIA contract with Brent Call Contractors. Do you still have one to do?
No.
I move to approve AIA agreement in all exhibits with Brent Call Contractors Incorporated for medical examiner renovations in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-nine